Brian is there?
I'm here.
Okay, got, I got you. Thank you.
Great. Normally in our meeting right now, we would do comments on agenda items from residents. And Mrs. Esha is putting up on the screen ways for residents to make comments on the meeting. And because some of those are going to take some time, we're going to open that up to you now. And you can start submitting comments if you would like, and we will come back to this later in the agenda. So you can submit your question via Zoom. You can email the school board, or you can call 412-457-0665 and leave a voicemail message. So we welcome you to begin sending your comments now, and we're going to move on to Section B, Bills and Financial Reports.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarucci. Section B this evening, we have Section B one list of bills for month of April 2020. This is our first run of bills for a month. At our meeting next week, we will have our second run of bills. Our expectation is also to have the Section B two, monthly financial statements for a month of March 2020 for next meeting, as well as Section B three, any applicable budget transfers for a month of April 2020. At this time, I would like to address the COVID-19 pandemic financial effects on the district during this section of the meeting. The Gateway School District is attempting to deal with the many unprecedented negative financial effects that are occurring and will surely persist from the current COVID-19 pandemic. This situation is not unique to the district. This situation is applicable to all school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I want to state publicly, there is absolutely no financial windfall for the district resulting from the pandemic. The district is being required to continue making various types of payments as depicted and required in the Pennsylvania School Code, as well as required to continue making various required types of payments as enacted in recent federal and state legislation. There may be some expenditure line items that appear to be underspent. However, it is anticipated that various local tax revenues will not be received as originally anticipated for the current 1920 fiscal year. The district is dealing with a lot of financial unknowns from the effects of the current stay-at-home order is having on our local, state, and national economies. At this time, none of us can say or even predict when the current stay-at-home order will end. In particular, the reductions in various local revenues is a negative condition occurring during remainder of the current fiscal year, as well as reduced collections in the subsequent 2021 fiscal year, possibly even into the 2122 fiscal year. There is no accurate means to calculate these various reductions in local revenues. Specifically, loss of local revenues from interest earnings, earned income taxes, local taxes, D transfer taxes, mercantile taxes, and various other collections of delinquent local taxes. District already had some pre-existing challenges going into the upcoming 2021 fiscal year that were going to be dealt with in the budget development process. Now our efforts have been made even more difficult due to the current pandemic. Significant issues such as the timing of issuance of the new bonds to fund the planned renovations to the Gateway Middle School are also being discussed and reevaluated. More information related to the issuance of the new bonds, as well as other particular items in the 2021 budget, will be shared with district stakeholders during future budget and finance committee meetings. There are unknown issues related to the stability of state funding for the upcoming 2021 fiscal year. The state revenues are estimated to be in a deficit condition of several billion dollars for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. The district may be lucky to receive the same amount of state funding in the 2021 fiscal year as was received during the current 1920 fiscal year, let alone receive any additional funding from the state. In addition, rumors of possible state legislative action being discussed would have a significant negative effect on the finances of all Pennsylvania school districts. The district's central administrative team is collecting information related to the current and very fluid circumstances in order to properly react and utilize the information in the upcoming 2021 fiscal year general fund budget. We are dealing with a financial situation that occurred very quickly during the course of three or four weeks, and not gradually similar to previous economic downturns that have occurred over several years. An economic recovery just as quickly is not very likely or realistically going to occur. Thus, we must attempt to plan our budget, given the best information currently available prior to the required budget adoption date of June 30th, 2020. Please, everyone, stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Shaw. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shaw on the financial reports? I'm going to give you a minute because some of you are on mute.
Or if there are any questions concerning Mr. Shaw's statement. And we will make sure that we include that within the board packets, and we'll be able to post that online.
Okay. Take a break. Mrs. Esha, is there any comments coming in yet? I don't see anything on my screen.
Yeah, I have nothing coming in at this point. No calls or...
All right, let's move on to Section D because there is no Section C Personnel Agenda. Mrs. Crump.
Thank you, Ms. Sarucci. Presented for your approval for next week, we have one resignation listed. And under transfers, we have three per the collective bargaining agreement. We do anticipate a few additional motions for the next meeting, but they did not come in time for this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mrs. Crump? Okay. Moving on. We have no conferences and conventions. Section F is Administrator's Report Action Agenda Item.
Dr. Rossi, are you able to take education, the elementary piece with pilot programs?
Sure. Bonnie, can you scroll down a little bit, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
We have, thank you. We have four pilot programs, and what these are is educational platforms that have offered free access due to the COVID-19. So we're just asking for approval of these programs this evening.
Okay. And then Paul, you have one action item, correct, Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Item number two, approve the extension of the current liquid propane gas or LPG Auto Gas Equipment and Pricing Agreement and the National Propane Supply Agreement with Feral Gas for the purchase of LPG to fuel the district's contracted school buses with Student Transportation of America, Inc., for an additional term length beginning on July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, with a final fixed price rate to be determined based on the current market conditions. Please note that the selection of an exact lock-in fixed price rate will be monitored and determined by both representatives of the district and Feral Gas subsequent to approval of the resolution. The district's upcoming LPG fixed price rate is $1.21 per gallon from August 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021 with Feral Gas.
And Mr. Shaw, you said, just so the public knows, this is an action item because the price is really low right now. We want to lock it in.
Yes, we have an opportunity based on the last price that was given from my contact. It was approximately $1.2 per gallon. The price of $1.21, that's a savings of over $34,000. What I would like to be able to do is try to lock in for the first time our very lowest price and try to get to about 99 cents a gallon if at all possible.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members?
Should I make a motion?
Scott, a motion, please. Sorry.
No moved.
Say your name. Say your name when you motion.
Scotty Williams' motion.
Brian Gottman, second.
Thank you. Now discussion?
I have a question for Paul.
Yes.
Paul, when you lock in that, is that locked in for good, or if it goes down more, you can re-lock it in?
No, it's one and done for that. Given the nature of where we stand, we had a very mild winter, coupled with the fact that there is, you know, a lot of transportation is not occurring. We definitely have the opportunity to take advantage of that situation, probably one of the few advantages we'll be able to take during this pandemic.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, Bonnie.
Okay, Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mrs. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calery.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, before we move on to Section F, Bonnie, are there any resident comments yet?
No, I have no emails or voice messages received at this time. No.
Okay. Let's move on to Section F Administrative Resolutions.
Okay, let me get there. One moment, please.
Okay.
Dr. Rossi, we have one more item for you on the professional development agreement when you're ready.
Yep. Number one is approve the professional development agreement for enhanced core reading instruction. Otherwise, acronym is ECRI, Training from the Institute of Scaling Evidence-Based Education. And Cleveland Stewart has been piloting this program through the PDE grant and the $10,000 grant from CSE will pay the cost of the training.
Great. Mr. Shaw.
I will take the rest. Item number two, approve the extension of the preventive maintenance service agreement for the two high school weight rooms and the one Gateway Middle School weight room with G and G Fitness Equipment, Inc. in the amount of $2,600 for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, as depicted in Exhibit A. Please note, the above service fees the same amount as the current service fee charged to the district for the 1920 fiscal year. Item number three is the annual approval of the IDEA Part B Use-of-Fund Subgrant Agreement with the Allegheny Interme- Unit Number Three for the upcoming 2021 fiscal year, as listed and as depicted in Exhibit B. Item number four is the approval of the Attachment A Notice of Adoption of Policies, Procedures, and Use-of-Funds by School District of the Allegheny Interme- Unit Number Three IDEA Part B for the 2021 fiscal year, as depicted and as depicted in Exhibit C. Item number five, approve Paul A. Shaw Business Manager and Board Treasurer as the district's agent who is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the Gateway School District, Allegheny County, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. All required forms and documents as required for submission to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, or PIMA, for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance for the reimbursement of applicable expenditures incurred during historic COVID-19 pandemic emergency in 2020 through the EM-3441 reimbursement grant claim with an applicable expenditure start date of January 20th, 2020, through a yet-to-be-determined completion date to claim applicable incurred expenditures. Please note, the school district has incurred a yet-to-be-determined grand total expenditure amount to be submitted and considered for reimbursement by the PIMA. The PIMA grant administrative documents consisting of DAP-1, DAP-2, the Pennsylvania Electronic Payment Program, or PEP, and other applicable required forms will need to be completed and submitted by the district to PIMA. Just please also note that this process is very similar to the process we underwent back for the blizzard of 2010. So I was actually able to review my file and have a good idea in terms of how that process is going to work moving forward. Item number six, approve the addendum to the current contract with Student Transportation of America, or STA, of Pennsylvania, Inc. for continued student transportation daily rate payments at 82% of the applicable contract prescribed rates for transportation days lost to the current COVID-19 pandemic for the remainder of the 1920 school year, as depicted in Exhibit D. Please note, the district has completed 132 days of school and related transportation as of March 13th, 2020. Thus, the remaining 48 days of school required to reach a total of 180 days would be paid to STA at the reduced 82% of the applicable contract prescribed rates. This reduced payment scenario also assumes the school year will not restart and applicable contract prescribed rates don't return to 100% for actual days of transportation services provided to STA. Obviously, at this point, we know that's not going to occur. The continuation of reduced payments to STA during the current COVID-19 pandemic emergency are required to maintain the availability of student transportation services, primarily consisting of drivers, and to enable the district to receive applicable federal assistance, as noted in recent federal legislation, by continuing payments to contractors. The 82% was actually a negotiated rate to enable STA to continue paying their drivers and cover various fixed costs. But again, most importantly, this enables the district to know that the company will still be there when we do get through this and we are able to open up and resume our upcoming 2021 fiscal year. Item number seven, approve the award of the bids for various types of school supplies bid by the district for the 2021 fiscal year, summarized by category below, as depicted in Exhibit E. And please note, as also indicated here, we do have some updated numbers, which we will update this section, and we will have that on the agenda for the board to vote on at next Tuesday's regular meeting. Item number eight, approve the continuation of the purge or records disposal service agreements with Sterus Cycle/Shredded for secure collection and off-site disposal of district records in the estimated quantities and at the associated container unit prices, as indicated in the two-purge service agreements for 2021 fiscal year, as depicted in Exhibit F. Note, the actual collection and disposal of district records will take place in July 2020 on a mutually agreed-upon date. A separate agreement was required this year by Sterus Cycle Shredded for administration offices in the high school, which serve as separate pickup points for district records disposal. Item number nine, award the bid for the bus pull-off project at the Ramsey Elementary School to Santa Maria Landscape and Cement Contractors, Inc., in the total bid amount of $108,489.50 as a critical capital repair project to be completed during the 1920 and/or 2021 fiscal year. Please note, the above critical capital repair project is currently budgeted for in the district's capital reserve fund budget for the 1920 fiscal year. Depending upon the duration of the current COVID-19 pandemic emergency, the project may or may not be able to begin during the current 1920 fiscal year. Thus, the project would begin and be completed during the upcoming 2021 fiscal year. Item number 10, award the bid for the retaining wall project at the Gateway High School Auditorium to Raffle Construction LLC in the total bid amount of $180,540 as a critical capital repair project to be completed during the 1920 and/or 2021 fiscal year. Note, the above critical capital repair project is currently budgeted for in the district's capital reserve fund budget for the 2021 fiscal year. Depending upon the duration of the current COVID-19 pandemic emergency, the project may or may not be able to begin during the current 1920 fiscal year to take advantage of other capital projects budgeted for and not initiated during the current 1920 fiscal year. Thus, the project would begin and be completed during the upcoming 2021 fiscal year. Item number 11, approve the amendment to the current agreement with the Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the reimbursement of expenditures incurred by the district for the applicable transportation of foster care children, as depicted in Exhibit G. Note, the above amendment is necessary to increase the reimbursement amount the district is able to bill and receive reimbursement for transportation services by initial $10,000 for the current 1920 fiscal year. Finally, item number 12, accept the following district donation received during the 1920 fiscal year, specifically to donor Valerie Warning, $8,671.27 in food-related purchase items. Recipient Jennifer Hoffner and the Backpack Program for all district school buildings.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for questions for Mr. Shaw.
I got two questions. First question in regards to the bids, is there, and as of the, I think it was the athletic part, that's currently, doesn't have a figure tied to it, is there any estimate of what that could possibly be?
What I heard me talking about, Mr. Gottman?
That one right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have that number actually here. Yeah, the award number that we're going to enter is $37,695.83. That was a number I just received late today as for the updated number. Actually, Mr. Hall was, that's why we didn't have the number available to go in for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to see a detailed itemization of that, Mr. Gottman, via email?
Sure.
Be nice to see what we're spending $35,000 on.
Yeah, well, we also, for the exhibit for that too, it'll have the updated, that shows exactly the vendors who bid, what was accepted, what was low bid, and what was awarded for that. So all that detail will also be provided with... Yeah, Exhibit E.
Thank you. I have my other question. It's probably for Mr. Brown, Bob Brown. Section 10 for the retaining wall for the auditorium. Where, we're at on the, like, what is the condition of the wall, and what part of this wall are we trying to repair? Is this something that could be postponed for a bit due to this virus?
We are replacing the entire wall alongside of the south end of the auditorium and the sidewalk that is on top of it.
Okay. How old is that, that part?
2004.
Were we expecting it to go this long before needing repair, or did something happen?
It's deteriorated over the years with the rock salt being used above it on the sidewalk and I guess melting over top of it. It is a Versaloc product, and the salt deteriorated it. It's in pretty bad shape.
This would be the wall, Brian, as you're driving from the student parking lot up to the corner there of the auditorium. And if you would go along the wall there by the auditorium, that is the access route where pedestrians would walk on the sidewalk. It is salted routinely. The salt then goes over the sidewalk and down into the crevices of the wall, and it's deteriorated over the last three to four years.
Okay. I know what you're talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the wall posing a hazard, or will it, within the next year or two, pose a hazard for use?
It could. You know, I'm not an engineer. I can't tell you if it will collapse. I think that's something you'd have to look at. You know, many people have. It is, it is in terrible shape. I can't tell you that it's going to fall down next week or next, you know, in the next six months. This was a project we knew that we would have to address. So I really can't tell you for certain that it's not going to last through the next year.
And Bob, just for the record, I'm all for, you know, prior to this outbreak, I was, you know, all for this. I'm just trying to, you know, make judgments here based on dangerous things versus, you know, aesthetically repairing things at this time. That's all.
I got, I understand.
If I can add to that.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I think the use of critical on item 10 is appropriate. I think that's a structural issue. I've looked at the law myself. It needs to be done before something bad happens. It's unfortunate that the timing is happening during this downturn in the economy and the shutdown. But I would argue that maybe number nine, the pull-off, the bus pull-off at Grand Canyon Z would be an item that we could maybe hold off on until we have some of the questions answered with all the uncertainty right now with the economy and our budget.
Why do you call number nine critical?
I'm saying number 10, the retaining wall, I agree that that needs to be addressed as soon as...
No, I mean, Mr. Brown, why is, why is the administration calling number nine critical?
Mr. Shaw could probably answer that better, but it was the wording from the state on what projects would be able to be done, and that being a safety concern of the district is why it was labeled critical.
That's exactly right. Critical was some of the terminology that our state association PASBO had reviewed, and it was some of the recommendation and proceeding with some of these projects that would be designated by the board as critical. Obviously, there's both safety concerns with both these projects. And again, we're able to make use of current funds, depending on whenever some of this stay-at-home and construction is able to resume to take advantage of both those current situations.
Right. I think this is actually a healthy conversation that should possibly continue with a little more critical thinking just based on the predicament the whole, the world's in right now. Yes, I'm all for this project, but at this time, is it truly critical? Not saying it's not. But I don't want to cut off our nose despite our face either. I just think it warrants maybe, you know, further conversation throughout the week, you know. You know, I would look towards the experts, being, you know, Bob, one of them, you know, to help guide through this with the understanding that, you know, it's absolutely something we want to get done. But again, given, you know, the financial ramifications of what's going on here, is it truly critical right now?
Yep, I think we're all thinking the same thing, Mr. Calery. Are there any other questions in this section?
Yeah, I have, I have one that ties to number 10. Is there any changes in the design of that wall in this repair, or will be the same design but different materials?
Same design, different materials. The portion now that is the retaining wall section of that area will be replaced with poured-in-place concrete rather than a Versaloc-type product.
Okay.
Just to piggyback off that, when we, when this is complete, I know you mentioned the salt was eating away at the Versaloc. Once this is done, is there any way to prevent the salt from eating away at this?
Part of the bid process, Brian, is that there are sealers in this that are included in this contract to seal that area. The difference is the product that was put in before just does not hold up to salt. Unfortunately, that's what we used before all of us were involved. But the concrete is going to be, you know, it's a much harder, much more substantial surface. But over time, salt will affect everything.
Right. I just hope you guys want to get more than like 16 years out of it.
Is there any thought of using like a calcium chloride versus rock salt, or is...
Into, we looked at actually even heated sidewalks. We looked at putting a roof over that area. Calcium chloride, there are some liquid materials that we have. Could try them out this year. We really didn't have the weather for it. There are other products to attempt to lessen the effect on the concrete.
Good points. Any other questions in this section?
Or Bob?
Okay, we have no more questions on Section F. We don't have any resolutions in Section G. I have a comment that came in that's not an agenda item. Before I go to that, are there any agenda item questions that you have, Bonnie?
No, I have no emails or voice messages at this time.
There's one comment that came across the screen from Claire Brown, and she would like to know the status of the Gateway Middle School renovations.
Well, I, I can address that. We have continued to meet during this pandemic online. Most recently, it was last Thursday with Access Architectures. We are nearing the conclusion of the final drawings with the proposed budget that would tie into the project. Of course, you heard during the speech information from Mr. Shaw concerning the bond rates and subsequent issues with the financial situation that all districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania would be in. We're going to have further conversation with the board over the next couple of weeks to see if we need to postpone the project or move forward. And we're gathering information that we will provide to the board and to the public concerning this. And we will have more information probably within the next week.
Thank you very much. Bonnie, how about if you put the slide that shows again how people can... Bonnie, how about if you put the slide that shows again how people can contact us while we do reports?
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's start with them. Well, before we go to superintendent's report, I just want to acknowledge our administration, our superintendent. All the staff, the teachers, everybody that's working. I I can't name every single department because there's so many that are working, the custodians of food service. I don't want to leave anybody out. But just so the community knows, these these people have been working so hard for you. They have been working day and night. They have been. Learning things they never thought they would have to learn. They've been having Zoom meetings. They've started online schooling. And everybody is giving a hundred and ten percent and I want to make sure it's acknowledged and it's appreciated greatly. Gateway is really always leading and ahead of the curve and doing a fantastic job. Given such crazy situation we're all going through. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Short for your superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarucci. You took the words right out of my mouth collectively as an organization with the board included. I can't be more proud, more impressed with the dedication, the resilience of everyone. Three weeks ago, pretty much the light switch went off and and we had to turn it back on and flip everything upside down and go to remote learning. Put in place a continue it continuity of education plan literally within a week's time. And the staff. Principals, central office, everyone collectively jumped on board and went to work to ensure. That our children received the best education possible to continue both achievement and growth during this unforeseen era. We are very fortunate that we were able to continue our learning with our kid. With our current curriculum in place, our our teachers spent probably four or five days. Learning different methods, technology available. And I do have to commend Myko and his staff for. Truly working around the clock and ensuring that a number of families, students received laptops and internet access. But we were we were able to pull this off. We're continuing to work through it. I will continue to update our community, our constituents with relevant information. Last week, I notified everyone of the cancellation of the Gateway High School musical. I was in contact with director Mr. Lassick. It was a difficult decision. But we must also acknowledge the work that everyone has done leading up to that and thank them for that. Also. Prom, the dates are still scheduled. We are working on alternative dates. Moving into June and also possibly July. If we're still in the lockdown stay at home mode as directed by Governor Wolf. We feel that these milestones are very important for our children graduation. So we're going to do our best to ensure. That we meet the the obligation of having the graduation ceremony. Also, I've been in contact with Principal Stevens from Gateway High School. Him and the staff are currently working on a gala that will allow students who. Looks like unfortunately, we will be canceling prom will have an opportunity to get together. And for one final time as a class celebrate together. So. We are continuing to work to find methods to hold these events. And we will continue to communicate with everyone involved, but I sincerely from the bottom of my heart need to thank not only the staff. Principals, administration, but also our students and families who are stepped up and have. Really done an excellent job given we have been on for a week and a half. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Short. Let's move on to Dr. Chaky. Do you have anything to say?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Rossi?
Nothing at this time.
Mrs. Bungard?
Thank you, Mr. Rucci. I'd like to take a moment to and just commend the special ed department for all of their hard work over this these past several weeks. From the central admin team to the principals to teachers, to ESL staff, nurses, guidance counselors, paras and the students and families. We really have come together and embarked on a new platform of learning and everyone has worked very hard. And again, I can't say thank you enough. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Krupp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rucci. I just want to thank all of our employees for all of their dedication that they've shown to the district during the pandemic. It has allowed us to continue to to continue to operate and provide education to our students. To continue practice, social distancing and to be safe.
Thank you. Let's move on to our board members. Mr. Ritter, do you have anything?
No report. Thank you.
Mr. Clary?
Just wanted to thank the school district again. I'm just, I'm not going to go through all of this. I echo everything that you said, Mrs. Sarucci. I think we all need to keep up the good work. We'll get through this.
Thank you. Reverend Gallagher?
I have nothing except to. Ditto everything everybody has said, the gratitude to the administration, the staff, the teachers, the parents, the the students. It's it's.
Mr. Gottman?
Yeah, I mean, ditto to what has been said with administration, the parents. I mean, our timeframe. You know, was significantly sped up and everyone's done a miraculous job getting everything going, you know, is amazing. And I mean, just for the public. You know, there's a lot of information going out about what's going on and I've found some good news from our state department health that. Everything we've been doing social distancing wise has started to show signs of our work there. It's been. Going to rate, which is great. And as long as we keep doing it, you know, we can get through this a lot sooner than later. So. To the public, please, you know, only go out if you need to and the more distancing we do, the faster we can be done with this.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman. Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, real quick. Obviously, we're all very appreciative of the administration and the teachers and everybody. I I'd like to just personally thank the numbers of the food service department for the spectacular job they're doing. A tremendous amount of meals every day. We just expanded that to six different locations and. Those those folks are really, really working their their tails off to get as much food out to our our district as they can. So I want to thank them again for their job. I also want to just mention that obviously the the teacher contract negotiation is on hold right now. You know, this is kind of a tricky situation with you're not been able to really meet in a in a conventional sense and go through negotiations. I have been in contact with a couple of the the members of the GEA. And you know, they obviously they understand the situation. As of right now, our budget, you know, we're not able to even meet for budget committee meetings. You know, our our budget is up in the air, so it's very difficult for us to really assess what we can do with the contract. Currently, I know there is some some back and forth between the administration and the teachers' union. Trying to at least get a one year deal set so that we can guarantee continuity of education throughout next year. So that we're not looking at a potential strike as soon as we come back from having this big long delay this year. I I encourage the GEA and the administration, continue those talks and find a way to make that happen.
Thanks for that update, Mr. McIntyre. Mrs. Delaney?
Yes, I'd like to, as everyone else is doing, thank all of the individuals in the school district, the staff, the parents, the volunteers, everyone. For working so hard during this very challenging time. And my thoughts and prayers are going out to those not only in our community, but in the national as well as worldwide community who are affected. By this pandemic and I, as I was reading one of the quotes from, because I didn't get a chance last month to mention for women's. Month, but Shirley Chisholm, who was the first black woman elected to Congress, something she said made me think that, yes, we can get through this all together. And one of her quotes was, you don't make progress by standing on the sidelines whimpering and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas and that's what I think we are doing and continuing to do as a district and community.
Great quote. Thank you, Susan. Mrs. Warning?
Ah, yes, just kudos to. Gateway School District for everything that they're doing to get through this. Nation order out and everyone just stay safe. We will get through this. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Same thing. I concur with what everybody said. Keep up the good work and we'll we'll see the light at the end here. That's all.
All right, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'm going to give one more. Call out for comments from Mrs. Ishaa. Do you have anything?
I I do not have anything to pass on. Nothing at this time.
Okay, well, without I seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Delaney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. One opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
Good night.